Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, August 10th, 2020. It is 7:02 by my clock and I am calling this meeting in order. Let the record reflect that there was no reportable action taken during our closed session. Item number five. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and or phone number will be visible to our participants. Unless you are providing public comments, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Item number six, roll call please.
Mayor Protem Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Santinez.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. This evening will be led in our invocation by Councilmember Ray Dutton and in our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. You'll please stand. Heavenly Father, please bless our actions here tonight and assist us in the building a strong and carrying community. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions for the issues that come before us. Thank you for the opportunity to help others and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. We ask for your protections and blessings on our military men and women and may then they always return safely to their families. In your name, amen. Okay, with hand over hard. I recite this pledge. Hi, pleasure to leave.
The flag.
Of the United States of America. For the Republic of Puerto Rico. Nation. Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Dutton and Councilmember Hamada. Item number nine, City Council Announcements. I'll start it off. I wanted to take a moment to remind our residents that the Bellflower Temporary Shelter, or New Hope, is operational. New Hope is a state-of-the-art 50-bed shelter for homeless individuals, Bellflower homeless individuals that is operated by Mercy House. The operator helps program participants with creating a housing plan, making connections to housing resources and ending their homelessness as soon as possible. The program maintains a strict no-walk-up policy and depends on referrals from local nonprofit organizations, contracted homeless liaisons, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. For more information on New Hope and our program, please visit our website at www.bellflower.org and please visit the Public Safety tab for more information. Mayor Protem Coops.
I'll turn the mic on. If you're interested in receiving the Bellflower E-Citizen Newsletter, you can sign up on our website. This newsletter includes updates, special events, community news, and health and safety information. In our current state of pandemic, the E-Citizen is sent out weekly and provides an important information related to Bellflower along with state and county updates. To subscribe, visit our website at www.bellflower.org and scroll to the bottom of the homepage and click on E-Citizen Newsletter. Enter your email address and click and submit. If you have any questions or need assistance, please call 804-1424-extension 2010. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Coops. Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. The farmer's market is open. The city of Bellflower operates a certified farmer's market at the corner of Clark and Oak Street in the Sims Park parking lot. The market is open on Monday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. except for the holidays and offers a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, flowers, and more. Food vendors also sell a variety of tasty items, including tamales and hummus. The market accepts EBT. Face coverings and social distancing measures are required for entrance. For more information, call 562-804-1424 extension 2331. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Sunny Santinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Economic Development Department has created a resource to help promote local restaurants. The webpage shows which Bellflower restaurants are open, have outdoor seating options, and provides information about specials. This is a great way to promote local restaurants and share resources with our community. For more information, please visit www.bellflower.org/resources/visit/bellflower_restaurants. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Santinez. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, first off, good evening, Bellflower. Let's see. The Bellflower Aquatic Center is accepting same-day reservations by phone for lap swim and water walk lanes. Bellflower resident season pass and punch card holders receive first priority and may call between 9:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. All other users may call beginning at 10:00 a.m. to reserve any remaining available lanes for that particular day. Reservations are accepted on a first come, first served basis. Changing rooms are not available. All patrons must abide by the regulations established in the current Los Angeles County Health Officer Order. For reservations, call 562-866-2015. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Hamada. Item number 10, Public Comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on the agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the City Council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Stewart. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If you're using a phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if you're joining us by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the Deputy City Clerk in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. With that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make public comment this evening?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature.
No problem, thank you.
Mayor, we do have a public comment from Joey. Joey, if you will give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen and then you can begin. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi there, this is Joey from the city of Downey. The reason why I'm reaching out today to the people of the city of Bellflower is mainly to address a concern in one of the items that aims to make it more difficult for the homeless by making it either illegal or enforcing a code that will place them in a more difficult situation when they are trying to sanitize or clean themselves in public occupation, public areas.
Mayor, this is an agenda item.
To you guys from the city of Downey because I believe it was one of your ordinances that you guys passed, which was implemented that pretty much stated that if a homeless individual was asked to leave the area and police officers saw him anywhere between a time framework after the warning, then they would be subjected to arrest. That same ordinance was adopted here in the city of Downey in accordance to the building block to what you guys provided. So my concern is, and I'm asking you as your neighbor, to please try to figure out what facilities and programs you can create to alleviate the demand so that you don't have to resolve to situations where we're incarcerating some of the most vulnerable and most susceptible people in our society. With that said...
Joey, does that complete your comments? I'm not sure we dropped them or you got dropped. Nonetheless, I think the comments to Councilmember Dutton's point.
Sorry, I have not finished speaking. Someone muted me and I believe I had a minute.
You did have time, correct. So, I'm not sure what happened, but... So, why don't we let the Madam Deputy City Clerk put you down to a minute and then we'll restart and allow you to continue your comments. Just while she's doing that, though, I will remind everyone that this is a topic that's going to be covered, I believe, under an agenda item, but I will allow for you to continue your comments, but just a warning that your comments are now taken and when the item comes up, you will have been observed as already providing public comment during that time. We can start now and then we can cut it off at two minutes, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So, Joey, go ahead and continue your comments, please.
Again, this is a public comment and I am hoping that the City Council does the right thing to protect the most disenfranchised of our society. Please look for alternate solutions that don't criminalize homeless people, but actually provide more help for those people who need our assistance. Finally, I will end it with, it would be nice to see the council members lead by example and wear their masks. Since COVID-19 sixty guidelines only function in a well-ventilated area that's usually outdoors. Indoors, you don't get the same protection, so it seems like there's a lot of situations that need to be addressed and I will begin to reach out to Bellflower if some of these concerns are not met because as you know, as our neighbors, you do affect our area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And before we go into the next speaker, I just remind the public that I'm not sure if you can tell, but we actually have, we have partitions that are separating each one of us and every time we actually leave our stations, we do put our mask on. So, we feel very confident with the protocol that we're taking here in Bellflower. On top of that, I would advise Joey to look at our website and the comment that I actually made when we started the meeting regarding the shelter that the city of Bellflower is actually already operating with the sensitivity with regards to the homeless. So I think the city of Bellflower is actually ahead of the curve in terms of our treatment of our homeless here in Bellflower. So, but again, I do appreciate the comments from Joey. With that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Rodolfo Cortez would like to present public comment. Mr. Cortez, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen and then you can begin. Go ahead, Mr. Cortez.
Good evening. So I have a couple of comments on non-agenda public comment. First comment, I appreciated that the last speaker, you know, noted that they're not from Bellflower, but they're, you know, contributing to the public dialogue. I think that's important. And one thing that I've noticed that they've done actually in Downey is that they actually have opened up the council chambers for a limited number of members of the public to come in. And, you know, that seems to be working for them. It doesn't seem that they've had an uptick among those that have gone or their staff. So it might be, you know, good for Bellflower to follow that example on some level, at least allow some members of the public coming in. We can see that it seems that there are staff members that are seated. Why can't the public, you know, come in to participate? Of course, we appreciate being able to participate telephonically, but it would be useful to be able to come in person. And again, in Downey, they've established that some number of people can go in. So that's useful just for democratic processes. I want to make a comment about, so the unhoused population has been mentioned and clearly Bellflower has done some things to help in that route. But I think that one thing that the city could be doing a lot better is preventing homelessness. So as we all know, just around from the City Hall, there were renters who were given way high rent increases and they had to leave. And the City Council, you know, did not act sufficiently quickly enough. That was, you know, a few, that was before the pandemic. So I imagine now, you know, we're seeing all these headlines about how homeowners or people that are still in the process of paying off their mortgage and renters just, you know, if the economy shuts down, how are people supposed to pay? It makes no sense. So we've gotten some responses, of course, from the state government, from the federal government, but none of it has truly been enough. And it would be really great for, you know, any city, especially, you know, a city, a working-class city like Bellflower to, you know, take the lead on this, you know. You can advocate for and push rent and mortgage forgiveness. Of course, it's within the power of Bellflower and the California Constitution to protect the population, to protect health. So you really got to do that. It's time to forgive the rents and the mortgages.
Thank you for providing a public comment today. I will say that the city does have a robust program to assist those in our city that do are in a position where they require assistance with housing and rent. So we are very proud of that, but again, nonetheless, we appreciate the comments. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any more members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other public comment at this time.
Thank you so much for that. Item number 11, Mr. Stewart.
This is a public hearing to consider three different resolutions, number 2052, 2053, and 2054, all related to a business assistance program regarding the Nest Tambien. And I believe Anika Mirashiro Ruiz is going to make the staff report regarding this item. And if we go forward with this, it'd be necessary to adopt these three resolutions. Go ahead, Anika.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'm going to put PowerPoint up just a minute. Okay, everybody can see my PowerPoint, okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the members of the City Council. The presentation before you tonight for consideration are for applications to chapters 2.1, 2.2, and three for the city's Business Assistance Program for business property and facade improvements submitted by Antonio Apling, owner of the Nest Tambien, with the support of the Fusakis Angelopoulos Families Trust, the property owners at 16916 Bellflower Boulevard. Hang on just one second.
Making sure we can, we're having trouble switching slides.
Mr. Apling and the Fusakis Angelopoulos families are requesting a not-to-exceed loan amount of $40,000 for interior restaurant improvements under chapter 2.1 of the program. Currently, restaurant construction has stopped due to lack of funding. This project was originally on schedule and fully funded. However, due to the pandemic climate, a few key investors have stepped away from the project and unfortunately has stopped construction. Additionally, at this time, financing has been difficult to secure. This forgivable loan will be distributed on a reimbursable basis. In addition to Mr. Apling's chapter 2.1 application, the property owners have applied for chapters 2.2 of the program. The owners have applied for a not-to-exceed loan amount of $60,000 to modernize the current building. Cafe Camelia closed just over a year ago. Due to the dated kitchen and undesirable layout, it's remained vacant. Mr. Apling saw potential at this location and has received a lot of community support. Fifty percent of the loan is forgiven after three years and the remaining 50% will be repaid monthly at a 0% interest for the final seven years. These improvements include restroom upgrades, adding a fixed roof cover over an existing patio with new railings, and this is important during the COVID time. They're going to be adding a sheer wall and a pass-through window. Mr. Apling has also applied for chapter, chapter three portion of the Business Assistance Program for facade improvements. These funds will be used for painting the building white and incorporating some accent colors, some new signage, and upgrading windows. Sufficient funds for all three agreements are budgeted in the Economic Development Budget. Economic Development Staff has reviewed the applications, which included the submittal of a business plan, financial records, job creation certification, and a commitment to cross-promote the city of Bellflower in their marketing promotions. Staff has determined that all three applications qualify for all three chapters and that the proposed improvements are eligible under the plan guidelines. This project meets the intent of the program in that there is an investment by the tenant, but additionally, there's a significant investment by the property owner. The public hearing for this item posted on July 30th at City Hall, the Bellflower Substation, Thompson Park, and Sims Park, and a public notice was published in the Herald American Newspaper. Staff recommends the City Council to open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt resolutions 20-52, 20-53, and 20-54, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my report and staff is available to answer questions and the applicants, Antonio Apling and Gus Fusakis and as well as consultant Liz O'Neil are all virtually on the meeting as well.
Thank you for that report, Anika. Let's see, let's go to questions. Start off with Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's pretty straightforward. I have no questions. I have some comments later and then I can, after we hear some of the people. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Sunny Santinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, I want to thank the staff for coming up with this idea. I think it's a good, it's a good way to help our business, especially those who want to kind of start. Although this is not a brand-new business for Mr. Apling, but it's a new business for him on the Boulevard. There's a couple of questions here just for clarification. The budget for this Business Assistance Program is $120,000. So in 2019 and 20, I believe that we allotted the same amount. Can you tell us how that money was used in the last fiscal year?
The money was not used, Councilmember Sunny Santinez. Only a small amount was used for Victory Medical, which is on the Boulevard as well. They were moved from Artesia and Bellflower Boulevard. And so there was a significant amount of funds left over that we're rolling over into this fiscal year.
Okay, so that's basically I'm getting into that. So it's going to be rolled over into this year because with this assistance on these three projects, well, three chapters of this Business Assistance Program, we're basically using up about $118,000 in my calculation?
That's correct, yeah. There'll be about $68,000 remaining in the fund after this is done and paid for.
That's including the carryover from 2019, 2020?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Just for clarification here, I'm kind of not sure in terms of the amount because different amounts are shown in the staff report and also the resolutions. So in chapter 2.1, how much funding is being requested?
The total amount requested, including Mr. Apling and the Fusakis Angelopoulos Trust, would be $40,000. They're both contributing towards the same project.
$40,000. So what's the $25,000?
In the program, the applicant can apply for a maximum of $25,000. If the applicant has also a property owner who is willing to participate, the amount can be increased by $15,000 to equal $40,000.
Okay, so that's $40,000 on chapter 2.1. And then on chapter, chapter three, how much funding is being requested?
A total amount, as well as chapter 2.1, the business owner and the property owner are both participating. And in this chapter, they get a total amount of $33,000.
$33,000, okay. And then, of course, chapter 2.2, the property owner is asking for $60,000, correct?
Yes, and that is a 50% forgivable loan. And 50% will be repaid over the remaining seven years of a 10-year structure.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for now, but I have some questions for the applicants later on, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santinez. Councilmember Dutton.
Thank you. I think it's a wonderful project that unfortunately got stalled at this time. Anytime that we can be pro-business and continue with getting rid of another vacant building downtown and this is the price we have to pay to help a business out and cross a vacant building off the list of vacant buildings. I think we're doing a good job to try to help. I understand why we're doing this and it meets all my criteria in my head. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Mayor Protem Coops.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, will this be enough money to complete the project? It sounds as though the project has been in process and they ran out of funds and this will complete it. And I'm all for giving what is being presented. My only concern is, I expect this is all we can do for them based on the program. Am I thinking that right?
Yes, Mr. Coops, it's the maximum allowance that they've applied for.
All right. And so if they, do we have insurances from the receivers that they will be able to complete the project and get open? Will this be enough? Or they got to wait another year to get another dose?
No, we, Mr. Coops, Councilmember Coops, they have assured us that this is, with working with Liz O'Neil to help really nail down, they've sharpened their pencil pretty well to get to this point and to figure out that this is what they need to complete the project and hopefully be open in the September, October timeframe.
Okay, that was my concern is that, you know, they say, well, you gave us what you had, but it still wasn't enough to allow us to open. And I think this, is the Cafe Camelia been out, what was, is that one year? Seems like it's been longer than that, but has it just been one year since we had an operator in that building?
With the history of Cafe Camelia, in doing my research, I saw that they closed and reopened their doors for a very short amount of time, just over a year ago. So it's been about 14 months since they officially closed.
Okay. Now, didn't we award them a beer and wine license on this property at some point in time, maybe less than a year ago?
Yes, that was for their, the chapter one, which is for the CUP for the beer and wine at that location. I think that might have been full alcohol at that location.
Okay, and we still have the program whereby you're able to use city funds to to go forward with those kinds of licenses. Don't we underwrite that?
Yeah, that's chapter one of the same Business Assistance Program. And so if somebody came in requesting chapter one, we could still do that.
And they were able to achieve that, correct?
Correct.
So if we're able to approve this tonight, there's a good chance that we would have an operating business come fall, October, November. Does that sound what you're hoping for?
That's what we're hoping for, yes.
All right, that's all my questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Coops. Most of what I was going to say actually was already noted. The one thing I would additionally add is, you know, we have a, in this applicant, we have a proven operator of a successful business in our city and I think the, I think the investment that the city is making as part of this, again, on a proven vendor already, is a worthwhile investment for our city in my purely opinion right now. So that completes my comments. With that, do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
So move.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Santinez. All right, so I have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Santanés and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Um, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments regarding item eleven A this evening?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we ask the applicant to speak first?
Not a problem, Mr. Santanés.
Thank you.
So, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, or, or staff, do, is the applicant, uh, joining us this evening via Zoom?
He is.
Great. Uh, per Councilmember Santanés's, uh, suggestion, can we have the applicant, uh, provide comment first?
Sure, we actually have both applicants. Gus Fusakis is, uh, in the virtual audience as well as Antonio Appling.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome both gentlemen. Uh, which one of you would like to provide comments on behalf of your project?
I can provide comments, uh, regarding the project. This is, uh, Antonio Appling.
Welcome, sir.
First off, I'd like to say, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Dutton, Councilman Santanés, uh, Councilman Hamada, uh, Mayor Protem Koops and, uh, and Mayor Garza for, uh, for your time. Um, thank you again for your, uh, for love for the city and, um, for, uh, your high level of, uh, of, of understanding towards the furthering of products, projects like, um, like ours that, um, we really feel will propel Bellflower Boulevard, um, you know, for the next ten, twenty years to come. And so I thank you for, uh, for investing in, in, in me and my family, um, in Mr. Fusakis and his family. And, um, this is a really great opportunity, um, and we don't take it lightly. Um, we recognize that this is abundantly grateful. Uh, we're, but we're abundantly grateful. We recognize that you guys are being abundantly generous. Um, and it just kind of shows where, where your heart is and, uh, where you believe that this city, um, is and where it needs to go. So, um, thank you very much for your consideration and, uh, thank you for all that you've done for us up to this point. You've already been really generous to us and, um, yeah, this is a really great opportunity and a really great program. So I'm, I'm very excited.
Thank you, Mr. Appling, for making those comments. Um, uh, Mr. Fusakis, would you like to make comments this evening?
Yes, I would, would. Thank you very much, uh, everyone in the City Council. As, as Antonio has mentioned, you're, you guys have been more than gracious in, in giving to, to businesses and we, uh, myself, um, and my partner, we feel very, very strongly about Antonio and his, um, abilities to make something really special here. Or otherwise we wouldn't be contributing ourselves to this. And unfortunately, as circumstances have prevailed, it seems as if we are in a position to need your services and your help. And, um, again, you've, you've come to our, our rescue a bit and I, I'm kind of more than humbled to, to, to say thank you and we feel very strongly that we will make this a, a, a proud area of, of Bellflower and on the Boulevard, something that we could all be proud of. Um, that I'm very humbled by the ability to, to stay in front of you here and, I guess virtually and, and thank you for the, uh, opportunity to allow such a, a, a program to give to these situations as they arise and I, I really don't know what's more to say except that we really believe in Antonio and his, um, his vision and we look forward to, um, sharing a meal there.
Thank you so much again for your comments, Mr. Fusakis and Mr. Appling. Before that, uh, again, thank you for joining us. Uh, I believe some of my colleagues may have questions for you. So, uh, Councilmember Santanés.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Appling and Mr. Fusakis. Um, uh, first of all, I want to thank especially, uh, Mr. Appling for believing in Bellflower. I know that it was kind of difficult to start the nest, but, uh, you persevered, even very successful in spite of the pandemic. I think, uh, is still operating. Uh, I still go there and buy, buy breakfast. Uh, so when I was reading the staff report, um, I was very intrigued with the, um, with the plans on, um, using the patio. Uh, because if I remember correctly, the previous operator, uh, there was a huge investment on the patio, but I, it was, it was rarely used if ever. So I was very excited when I, when I saw this being, being utilized, being planned to be utilized. So ca- can you give us a snapshot on, or how do you plan to use the patio?
Sure. Um, so I, yeah, I concur with what you're saying about how it was underutilized in the past. Um, I have an office that's, uh, in the live workspace directly behind Franks. And part of my passion and desire for this project, and even at times when it seemed like it was going to fall through, um, I would look out and see that patio and I could just envision what it was going to be. You know, just the, the appeal, um, the curbside appeal that it would have driving down Bellflower Boulevard and be able to see that there was something happening next door to Franks, which has an amazing patio. Um, so for us, we are, um, trying to create an environment for folks, um, where they will be able to fully utilize that patio, maybe, um, well, definitely more than it's ever been able to be used before. So, we're looking to extend the patio in a couple of different ways. Um, what it will do is it'll provide about twenty seats, um, for people to be able to sit out there and have a, a, a great experience. We're working with a fantastic designer, uh, uh, that's on here right now and she's open and available, I'm sure for any questions. But they're designing this beautiful patio that's going to have, uh, shade covering, um, that's going to have nice built-in, uh, uh, nice, nice soft built-ins for folks where they'll be able to sit out there and, and have a, a mimosa or, or share breakfast with their family. So, um, the patio is going to be really beautiful. Um, there's, you can see some of the designs, um, they were, they were put up earlier. Um, and I think what you're going to see is a, a transformative experience, um, that's going to happen out there that, uh, that the folks in Bellflower will really enjoy.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Mr. Fusakis, um, in the staff report, um, I saw that, uh, you're planning upgrading the restroom. Uh, I, I cannot thank you enough for, for adding it in because how many times have I been at the previous restaurant there and that's one of my, one of my negative comments. So thank you for upgrading it and I look forward to having lunch and dinners. Uh, although I'm biased, I'm going to stay with the nest for breakfast, okay? Just to let you know, Antonio. But I look forward to having dinner and lunch at the Nest d'Amiens. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santanés. Councilmember Dutton.
I don't have too many questions. I just got, I'm just being inquisitive. Hey Gus, did you get the trash bill straightened out next door?
I did, sir.
Good.
It seemed like it all worked out, um, last, um, meeting that we were at, the, a couple of days afterwards. I did receive a call from the trash company and everything was sorted out. Thank you, sir.
Good, glad to hear it. Must be like a double whammy tonight if we get a five oh vote. But anyway, I'm, uh, I like what I'm seeing. Thank you for all you do.
Right, thank you for that. Councilmember Dutton, Mayor Protem Koops.
I gotta turn my mic on. Have either one of you ever reached out to Larson Trust as to whether or not you'd utilize that parking lot or not next to the, the facility?
Um, I have on several occasions. He's kind of a little short with me and the, I don't know, I don't know if there's any, been any bad, bad blood in the past, but, uh, he was not very receptive to my ideas of, you know, maybe sharing it or some type of, uh, compensation or what have you. Um, he just kind of pushed the idea of selling it and pretty much that was the end of it. He never came, uh, he never circled around back to that.
What, what's your plan? What, what did you hope to accomplish?
I hope to accomplish a, a, a space there that would be, you know, viable for my, my tenant to have all the opportunities to grow. Um, and, and at the same time, perhaps compensate him for something that's been there for so many years. And, you know, obviously not doing him anything. I think he has the, a little change machine there that charges for parking, but obviously that's, I would think pretty hard to, to enforce or what have you. And, um, I don't think it's worked out to his benefit, but he, he certainly hasn't come back my way to entertain anything.
Okay, I just wondered whether or not he had, uh, had conversation with you as to what are his thoughts were on that lot, whether he would remain as a lot or if he was going to develop it? Or if you had reached out to him to offer him some sort of a enumeration to utilize it? That's all the questions I have.
That was a couple of years ago when we did reach out and, and last year I also reached out, but I didn't get a, a call back. Um, he, he just seemed more, I, I'm going to say the, the word opportunistic, whatever seemed to come around. Um, but he wasn't, you know, pursuing what at least I was offering. And, um, he did mention something about, you know, working with, uh, the city to see what they can do. But he, he kind of held his cards a little close.
You realize the city has acquired the bank property on the corner of Maple and Bellflower Boulevard? And there's a lot behind there that is available for use as well?
Wonderful. I, I mean, the other parking lot that's across the street that you have available for Franks has worked out to a degree. But, um, overall, I, I could see that people are more flocking to that lot that's next to, uh, the nest. And it seems to be a, a, kind of like a, a lot, how can I say, a manifest destiny. It's kind of should be our lot. But, um, he's been, like I said, very, very closed off and, uh, dealing with us in any regard.
All right, all right. Appreciate your answers. Uh, I appreciate your project. And I'm glad, you know, you and I have been through thick and thin with, uh, trying to get Franks built and Cafe Camelia was going to be there and, uh, it looks like finally we got the right combination for you as good tenants on the corner and on the, your nest property. So I think this is a winner.
We are completely tickled, sir. I, I'm, yes, we've worked hand in hand for many years and I, I couldn't imagine a, a relationship could be any better with anybody. This is for us to know that we, we have support and that we, that visions can become true and, and dreams can become true. Like Antonio's idea has, has encapsulated us and, you know, we want to do what we can to, to further this project. And we're so happy that you're able to partner up with us.
And I think one of the reasons why we did the liquor license is we expect that he'll be beyond breakfast at one point. It'll be lunch and dinner there at some point in time.
And we're hoping so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, again, we've heard, uh, that the budget's there, um, and this request is fitting, uh, again, to the purpose of those said funds. Um, I really wanted to commend, uh, both, uh, the business owner and the property owner for their commitments and fortitude, uh, and during this time. I think this planned business is, is, is definitely going to complement, say, Franks at the corner. And with such, I think it's going to be one of those great rock and roll corners, uh, that we're going to have in town. So, um, again, the business owner, again, has established, uh, one of the local premier, again, breakfast joints, as he puts it. And, uh, definitely, I think, uh, I think we're all looking forward to, uh, to this planned, uh, it's the all-day eating joint. So, uh, uh, definitely congratulations to you both. I, again, wanted to, again, add to the, uh, again, to the proper, and thank you for helping us, uh, again, host the new mural in town. Definitely that's, uh, going to be showcased and, uh, hopefully that's, uh, help, uh, draw people there to that, uh, to that area. So, uh, again, uh, getting my best to you both, uh, looking forward to it. Uh, uh, I'll be happy to eat at both places for breakfast. So, um, so it's good. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Um, great. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Appling, Mr. Fusakis for answering our, our questions this evening. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments regarding item eleven A?
Yes, Mayor, um, Consultant Liz O'Neil would like to present public comment. Go ahead, Ms. O'Neil.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and city staff. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, this is, um, kind of an emotional experience right now in it, in all the best ways. Because as you know, I've been a consultant in your city for over a decade. And when I first came to the city, um, our hopes of growing the city, the way that we've seen it develop was, was really just a dream. And we've seen so many things happen in the last couple of years. So there's people I'd like to acknowledge, particularly in light of tonight's, um, tonight's application, because when Jim and I were sitting in his office a few years ago, trying to develop a plan that would benefit business owners, we, we, we probably weren't really thinking that we'd ever see it realized in this way. This is the first time that every chapter of the program has been utilized by the same applicant, starting with chapter one a year ago with the CUP, and now graduating into all chapters of the program. It's a real testament to the success of the program. So I, I really want to acknowledge city staff for making this a possibility for business owners in the city. I want to acknowledge the, the property owner, Mr. Fusakis, and I hope that this sets an example to other property owners in the city to really come forward and take a leap of faith on their tenants in an attempt to improve their property, but also improve the city. I'd like to acknowledge, uh, Antonio Appling because this has been a very challenging project and it's been fraught with breakdowns and disappointments all the way through, you know, and, and we've always found a way to overcome the challenges and, and take another step forward. And I, I also just want to acknowledge the City Council for their continued support of efforts like this and my efforts. And thank you. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. O'Neil. Deeply appreciate it. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any of the members of the public wishing to make comments regarding item eleven A this evening?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any further comments at this time.
Great, thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Um,
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Great, so I have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Santanés and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Without objection, that will be the order. Gentlemen, any other questions or comments?
Oops. I'd like to make a, uh, a motion, uh, to adopt resolution number twenty dash fifty-two, loan file number eight seventy-four for the property at one six nine one six. And also adopt resolution number twenty dash fifty-three, loan file number six nineteen point two, also at property sixteen nine one six, Bellflower Boulevard. And then adopt resolution number twenty dash five four, uh, loan agreement file eight seven four point one, also at one six nine one six, Bellflower Boulevard.
I support the motion.
Okay, great. So I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton, a second by Mayor Protem Koops. Uh, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanés?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Appling, Mr. Fusakis. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, item number twelve, uh, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration and possible action to read by title only, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-six in ordinance amending chapter eight point five zero of the Bellflower Municipal Code to clarify prohibitions related to the unlawful use of public restroom facilities. And I believe our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Milano, has a staff report for you.
Yes, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Uh, give me one second while I share my screen. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And while you're getting the screen up, I just wanted to note that for the record that there was, uh, public comments submitted via email today, um, by Mr. Roberto Alvarez. So I just want to note that on the record that that is part of the public comment as well. So, Mr. Milano, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, this is consideration and possible action to read by title only and wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-six. The proposed ordinance amends the Bellflower Municipal Code, chapter eight point five, by clarifying prohibitions related to the unlawful use of public restroom facilities in order to maintain and protect public health and safety. Amending the code will address, uh, the growing concern of individuals actively disrobing, washing clothes in sinks and/or grooming themselves within common areas of public restrooms. These activities are outside the intended purpose of many of the city's public restrooms. The aforementioned activities are a growing concern in light of the current, uh, current COVID nineteen pandemic and with regard to children who may be exposed to disrobed individuals when using shared public restroom facilities. The proposed clarifications, uh, assist with the following, uh, providing a safe environment for families and children, limiting, uh, potential exposure to an individual disrobing in, uh, common restroom areas, and preventing the spread and preventing the spread of communicable diseases by limiting behavior that contributes to unsanitary conditions with regard to many high-touch surfaces within public restrooms that require regular cleaning and sanitization. The restrictions proposed by the ordinance would not apply to designated uh, changing room and gymnasium restrooms within public facilities where disrobing and/or showering is, is an intended use of those facilities. The recommendation this evening uh, to the city council is to um, read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-six or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. That can, uh, concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Milano. Um, why don't we start off with Councilmember Dutton?
I'm in.
Okay. Great. Not a problem. Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton, Mayor Protem Koops.
I feel the same way. Um, PJ, I expect that you've had some pretty uh, heinous experiences with our restroom. That you, we, it's getting out of control. Is that what you perceive?
Yes, uh, on numerous occasions, we've had individuals disrobing. Uh, we've had families actually walk in and see it where we've had to call the sheriff's department. In addition, uh, we have individuals that are washing um, their personal belongings for a prolonged period of times uh, in the restrooms and really just taking up the restrooms for others' ability to use them as well. And, and it's not at every, every restroom. Uh, but uh, it's definitely not the intended use of, of the restrooms.
So you believe this will be a solution or just uh, how do you think this is gonna go?
It, it, we're hoping that it gives us a little more teeth uh, when we do ask and, cause we, over time, we've asked individuals to stop and, and not do that. And one of the other um, unintended consequences is when the area doesn't get cleaned up immediately, uh, we'll have pools of water in the restrooms and that's another uh, unsafe area. But we're hoping by being able to put signage in, in particular places that it'll give our staff uh, at the parks in particular a little more teeth um, behind the warning and, and uh, when, when we do need to contact the sheriff's department for assistance, uh, there will be something that they can actually cite for.
All right, all right. That's all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem Koops, uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, pretty much I'm, I'm, I'm going with this also. Uh, again, this is a public health, safety, welfare issue and uh, these bathrooms have intended use and, and uh, there are rules and um, it's uh, uh, something that uh, that's, that brings great concerns for families that are out there on the park. Hey PJ, uh, are the freestanding restrooms still closed?
Yes, as of right now, um, we've begun discussions with the Public Works Department, but we aren't uh, fully prepared within COVID-19 protocols to open up our restrooms. Uh, but yes, all restrooms at, at parks are currently closed. Um, the restrooms, not the locker rooms, but the uh, restrooms at the Aquatic Center, when it is open for operations uh, i- is available to participants in those programs. We do anticipate uh, as we look to the fall and opening up um, uh, some portions of programming that the restrooms will be opened specifically for those uh, utilizing those programs or participating in those programs. But it'll still be in a very limited capacity at this point.
Okay, thank you PJ. All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Santinez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, PJ, thank you so much for bringing this up and uh, thank you for working with the city attorney with the, with regards to the language of this uh, ordinance. Uh, I really appreciate that. And I can just um, imagine, based on the comment that was given during the public comment section and also the, the email comment, that um, in reading the staff report, I'm trying to picture myself uh, with my child entering the restroom, let's say, at Sims Park, and seeing someone disrobing, and my child cannot even use the sink because it's full of, um, filled with um, with clothes being washed. So that was not the intended use of public restroom. So I just wanna remind our, the listening public that the public restrooms at parks are intended for short-time use, for washing um, your hands, your face, up to your elbow. It's not intended for disrobing, washing your, your full body and so on and so forth. That is not the purpose of public restroom. So I'm all for this. I think it's very timely, uh, especially with the pandemic going on right now. Uh, it's, we just need to be very safe. So, again, uh, staff, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
Again, thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Santinez. Um, my comments are pretty much gonna echo what we've heard before. I think the public restrooms were designed and they're offered uh, for an intended use. And I think the activities that were reported by staff are, is not in, in line with the intended use of public restrooms. Um, I will say that in the city of Bellflower, we are proud again of the fact that we uh, have built a, uh, a shelter for our homeless uh, to those in the audience that um, that feel that this is somehow, an intent to somehow be punitive against the homeless. That it's, it's actually, it's the opposite. Um, we do have appropriate facilities for our homeless in New Hope. Um, they are more than capable, they're state-of-the-art, and uh, the homeless that we are helping in our city are available for their use there. And so uh, we definitely encourage uh, for the homeless of Bellflower to continue to use, and you hope for those uses. Um, and that completes my comments this evening. Um, so with that, uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public uh, who have not commented before, uh, that wish to make public comments regarding item twelve A this evening?
Yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Joey, I believe that you've already presented comment on this item.
That is correct. So, and I did state in the record that his comments before were for, regarding item twelve A. That's why I allowed him to continue. Uh, they were actually not supposed to be taking place during public comment. So his comments have already been entered the record. Is there any other member of the public wishing to make comment, public comment regarding item twelve A?
Uh, Mr. Cortez, I believe the same applies to you.
That is correct. So, uh,
Okay. Uh, Mayor, I'm not seeing any other uh, public at this time.
Great. Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So seeing none, um, any of the, for the questions and comments regarding item twelve A, gentlemen?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one final question. Uh, Mr. Milano, how do you, can you envision, how do, how would you enforce this ordinance?
Uh, the key to the ordinance is it's, it, it's in designated restrooms only where signage is posted. So we will work with the city attorney's office uh, once this ordinance goes into effect and get the proper signage in a clearly designated area uh, where uh, if staff is notified or staff witnesses uh, any infractions, they can uh, point right directly to that sign and remind um, uh, individuals uh, of, of the ordinance.
And then if the person is uh, is continuing to be uncooperative?
Uh, then we would do a, as we would with any other of our municipal codes, is we would contact uh, public safety for assistance uh, as needed.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santinez. Uh, any other questions or comments, gentlemen? All right, hearing none, uh, somebody?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for the city council of Bellflower to, uh, to introduce ordinance number one three nine six, an ordinance amending chapter eight point five zero of the Bellflower Municipal Code to clarify prohibitions related to unlawful use of public restroom facilities.
Second. Okay, sorry. So I have a motion by Councilmember Santinez and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Uh, if there's no further discussion, roll, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk and gentlemen. Item twelve B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration possible action to adopt urgency ordinance number thirteen ninety-seven, an uncodified urgency ordinance retroactively amending ordinance number thirteen ninety-two regarding the city Bellflower Planning Agency and read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-eight, an uncodified ordinance implementing the Bellflower Business Recovery Program. And I believe we have Ms. Corpus to make the staff presentation for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Welcome, Ms. Corpus.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. On June twenty-second, twenty twenty, the city council adopted urgency ordinance number thirteen ninety-two to implement temporary regulations aiding in recovery of the local economy. The Bellflower Business Recovery Program establishes a permitting program allowing for temporary outdoor events. Section two of ordinance number thirteen ninety-two caused the city council to act as the city's planning agency for all matters until expiration of the temporary regulations in June of twenty twenty-one. On June twenty-second, the council also introduced and waived first reading of ordinance number thirteen ninety-three. Except for the urgency findings, it was identical to ordinance number thirteen ninety-two. The second reading for ordinance thirteen ninety-three was scheduled for July twenty, excuse me, July thirteenth, twenty twenty. And at that meeting, the city council discussed how the Bellflower's planning agency duties should be delegated to the planning commission. The council chose not to adopt urgency, excuse me, the council chose not to adopt ordinance number thirteen ninety-three and directed urgency ordinance thirteen ninety-two, amended to reauthorize the planning commission, commission to act as the city's planning agency. To ensure that the temporary outdoor provisions of the Bellflower Business Recovery Program remain intact, ordinance number thirteen ninety-two has been retroactively amended to satisfy the council's intents. Urgency ordinance number thirteen ninety-seven and regular ordinance number thirteen ninety-eight presented this evening reflect those changes directed by the city council related to the Bellflower Planning Agency. If approved, the regular ordinance would take effect on September twenty-third, twenty twenty, while the regular ordinance would take effect immediately. The recommendation this evening would be to adopt urgency ordinance number thirteen ninety-seven by at least a four-fifth vote. Read by title only, wait for the reading, and introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-eight or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the, um, Ms. Corpus for that report. Uh, thank you for bringing before us again, uh, Mayor Protem Koops.
Yes, I think that uh, I agree with what's been written here. Um, I, you know, these are special times and we need special kinds of ordinances to try to make this, implement the, uh, what we're trying to accomplish. And uh, I have no questions on what's been offered here, but maybe some will develop as we go, but it makes sense and I wanna support it.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem Koops. Uh, Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, I think this again clarifies the, the matter from the last few meetings. Um, uh, Beth, uh, when you refer to outdoor events, does that, I know in, in, in the report says dining and retail sales. Does it, does it also include outdoor services, i.e. haircuts?
Uh, we can make that interpretation. Uh, originally, when we wrote the ordinance, it was um, specific to outdoor dining and outdoor sales. However, the intent is to aid in the local recovery of businesses. And so we can make that interpretation that this also applies to, to personal service, service businesses like hair salons and nail salons and barber shops.
All right, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Santinez.
Yeah, just, just for clarification, so the, we understanding now is the only um, function basically that we're taking over as council from the Bell, from the planning commission is the provisions related to temporary outdoor event. All the rest stays with the planning commission. Based on uh, ordinance thirteen ninety-two, right?
That's correct, yes.
So I'm, I'm good with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. City Attorney, do you wanna make a comment? I'm not sure if you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification, this is a administrative permit process. So all the outdoor activities can be approved by Ms. Corpus.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Mr. Berger. You good, Mr. Santinez? Great. Councilmember Dutton?
As long as this unwinds our screw-up. Think it does. Get to the point.
I hit the nail on the head. I, no comment. I'm, you said it all. Uh, okay, great. Um, so there's no more questions from uh, my colleagues on the city council. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments regarding item twelve B this evening?
Yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Uh, gentlemen, any last questions, comments regarding item twelve B? Hearing none, then I'll need to make a motion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, be happy uh, to make a, a motion to adopt urgency ordinance number thirteen ninety-seven.
Well, the second motion, Mr. Mayor.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hamada and a second by Councilmember Santinez. Uh, without further discussion, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Uh, item number thirteen, there's a, oh.
My apologies. Go ahead.
I'll be happy to finish. Um, okay, I'd, I'd be happy to make the motion uh, to introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-eight. Uh, that's an uncodified ordinance implementing the Bellflower Business Recovery Program.
Well, the second motion?
Great. So I have, again, a motion by Councilmember Hamada and a second by Councilmember Santinez. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for catching that.
Almost screwed up again.
We're working on that.
Yeah, right. We'll get it. We're, I'll get there.
All right. So item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
This is a non-public hearing consideration item for consideration and possible action to provide direction to city management regarding spending plan for program implementation, plan for the use of community development block grant coronavirus funds and State Department of Finance CARES Act pass-through coronavirus relief funds. And Mr. Dalaga has the staff report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight's staff is seeking direction from the city council regarding the use of CARES Act funds, emergency funds providing by, provided by two different entities. HUD CDBG COVID funds and the State of California Department of Finance pass-through of CARES Act funds to local jurisdictions. The city is eligible to receive five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars in CDBG COVID funds and one million, five hundred and two thousand dollar and six hundred and fifteen dollar, let's start that one again. One million, five hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars in California Department of Finance CARES Act pass-through funds. Administration costs are allowed expenditures with both sources. However, while the CDBG COVID funds allow up to twenty percent in administrative costs, the Department of Finance CARES Act funds do not specify an administration limit. So staff has been conservative in applying a fifteen percent administrative cost percentage to these funds. Staff feels this percentage can be justified if challenged due to the nature of the grant program proposed. Should actual administration charges fall short of those percentage amounts, staff recommends the difference be programmed into the assistance programs themselves. So the background on these funding sources is interesting. The city was notified about the CDBG COVID funds back in April of twenty twenty, but guidance on the use of the funds wasn't released until mid-July. And then even more guidance was released just today. Staff felt it was important to have the guidance in hand before making spending recommendations for these funds to prevent incorrect spending which could result in repayment to HUD of any misspent funds. The city was notified of the availability, availability of the DOF's CARES Act funds in July. The rules for these funds require that the city submit a spending plan to the Department of Finance by September first with a spending deadline for all of the funds by October first, twenty twenty, or by the end of December with an approved extension. And staff will be applying for that extension to give us plenty of time to spend this mon, these monies as they are approved by council tonight. Based on the guidance provided, these CARES Act pass-through funds are more flexible than the CDBG COVID funds. And we'll get into that a little bit later. So there are, uh, based on the, the regulations that, and the guidance that's provided and the amounts of money that we receive, there are three realistic potential uses of the funds. there are three realistic potential uses of the funds for the city of Bellflower. First, we can pay eligible city COVID nineteen expenses with the CARES Act pass-through funds. Second, a business assistance program can be funded through both of these funding sources. And then a residential assistance program can also be funded with both of these funds, but we're going to be recommending that if a residential program is approved or directed to be implemented, that we use the CDBG COVID funds. And again, we'll talk about that a little bit more shortly. So for the Department of Finance CARES Act allocation, staff has identified seven eligible expenses incurred or soon to be incurred by the city to address the COVID nineteen pandemic. These estimated expenses listed there on the slide for you total an estimated three hundred and four thousand, six hundred dollars. That leaves approximately six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars left to program out of that funding source. Second, an emergency business assistance program can be implemented. Staff is proposing that this program be similar to the previously approved and implemented CDBG Business Assistance Grant Program, but with a few tweaks. We'd like to increase the maximum number of employees for small businesses up to fifty. We want to make sure that businesses most heavily impacted by the mandatory closures and restrictions will rate higher as this is a, an emergency CDBG COVID funding source. Teleworking capable businesses will rate lower. Businesses previously awarded a CDBG grant in the previous round that we had will not be eligible for this one. And applications will be scrutinized for the avoidance of duplication of federal benefits such as PPP loans, SBA grants and loans, et cetera. And to be clear about duplication of benefits, based on the guidance that's been provided by HUD and other agencies at the federal government, a business may receive a grant from the city with these funds, but must demonstrate a need for the funds and must not use these funds for the same purpose as any previously received federal assistance. So if they've gotten a, a grant or a loan for PPP, but they want to use these funds for building, let's say, plexiglass dividers in their business, it's entire, entirely allowable to do that. For business assistance, the federal eligibility requirement requirements are slightly different between the COVID CDBG funds and the CARES Act pass-through funds. With the CDBG COVID funds being more restrictive and require, require continued meeting of the national objectives. If you'll remember from our previous CDBG grant program, these national objectives are the low and moderate income area qualifications and the low and moderate income job qualifications. Similar to our program that we recently approved, the guidance allows for these funds to be used for working capital, overhead rent and utilities, business services to increase capacity, labor expenses excluding labor to the owner, purchases of inventory and supplies, and equipment necessary for business operations, not including vehicles. Another program that can be implemented with these funds is an emergency residential assistance program. And based on HUD guidelines, an emergency residential assistance program could look something like the following. A maximum of one thousand dollars per month for up to three months, and this is the high end. This is the limit, so we don't go over that, otherwise the program is no longer considered an emergency program. And there are many more restrictions and requirements for a, a housing rental program. So the, this can be adjusted down. The max can be lower, the number of months can be lower, or, you know, switch them out three months, lower, lower amount of money or a lower amount of money for three months, so we, we can play with that. This has to be available to low-income households, which is eighty percent of the area median income. And to do that, when we do the applications, income verification will be required by the applicants. The payments are made to the debtors or landlords, because this could be potentially a mortgage program to help people with their mortgage payments or their utilities as well, if they can show the proof of need. So these are made to those debtors or landlords or mortgage, mortgagers, not the residents themselves. So how this is operated, we'd be paying out checks to the, to the landlords potentially. And proof of hardship related to COVID nineteen is required, so we'd have to see something that shows layoff, unemployment, reduced hours, or something along those lines in order to approve an applicant for a program such as this. This program is not new. It, staff is aware that same program using the same batch of funds is underway in Los Angeles, South Gate and Long Beach. Administration and implement, implementation of this program could be accomplished in a couple of ways. To realize some general fund savings, we could implement this program in-house with a review of the utilization of city staff and various departments to determine who could assist the Economic Development Department with this program and implementing it. Some support from our housing consultant, Avant Guard, could be available as well. And then the second option, the city could work with Kingdom Causes Bellflower to administer this program. A lottery system of some sort would be utilized to determine applications to review and/or fund. We would work that out and work with our consultant, Avant Guard, to figure out the best way to do that. So funding the programs, should city council direct staff to implement a residential assistance program with a portion of the funds, staff recommends that due to the stricter regulations governing the CDBG COVID funds for business assistance, a housing assistance program would be funded with those CDBG funds. And the, excuse me, and the business assistance be funded with the Department of Finance CARES Act funds. This slide shows approximate amounts of how funds from the two funding sources could be distributed, including administration costs. As mentioned earlier, the administration percentage applied to the CD, CDBG COVID funds is the allowable twenty percent, while only a fifteen percent administrative percentage was applied to the CARES Act funds. Again, that's since minimal and vague guidance has been provided regarding charging admin costs to these funds. So the estimated amounts are forty, four hundred and thirty thousand for residential assistance, and that would be with the COVID funds. Three hundred and fifty-four thousand for eligible city COVID nineteen expenses, and we would use the Department of Finance CARES Act funds to pay for those, because those are eligible under that funding source. Four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars would be for a business assistance program using the Department of Finance CARES Act funds. And then there'd be two hundred and fifty-one thousand for administration from both sources. Now, again, this is not to say that the city council could adjust the amount of CDBG COVID funds to allow for additional businesses assistance or vice versa. Going to the extreme, this slide shows the funding breakdown if a residential component is not included. Here, with the except, exception of the eligible city expenses associated with addressing COVID nineteen and administration costs, all remaining funds would be programmed for business assistance. So those numbers would be the three hundred and fifty-six thousand for eligible city COVID nineteen expenses with the Department of Finance CARES Act funds. And then the business assistance program from both sources would total just under eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. And the administration costs would remain the same at two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to cover the admin to run those programs. So based on the foregoing, staff recommends the city council provide direction to the city manager regarding a spending plan and program implementation plan for the use of CDBG coronavirus funds and state of, the State Department of Finance CARES Act pass-through funds, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my report, and Travis Seis and I are available to answer questions related to this item.
Mr. Dalaga, thank you for that comprehensive report. I know that, well, first of all, you know, we do live in a precedent at times, and I know we've been waiting for this guidance in terms of being able to figure out how it is that we can spend these funds. I know that our businesses and our residents really, we've heard a, a lot from them in terms of the needs. And so having guidance on this finally is, it's really very good for our city. I personally don't have any questions, but I, I do, I do want to note, in my opinion, that considering the amount of requests that we had, that have been made with regards to the residential component of our residents seeking out assistance with their, with their housing needs and how important it is the work that's been done by, by Kingdom Causes in arranging for this assistance, which I'm appreciative of. I think, considering the fact that there is a need, there's a demonstrated need, and the fact that, you know, the discussions that are going on in Washington right now, whether to extend benefits programs or not, I, I personally feel that we potentially could be at, really here at an eviction cliff. And so I think the more that we prevent people from falling into, losing a roof over their heads, it's, you know, if, if we as a city council could do something about it, I'm very much for it. So I, of the two options, I think I would, I definitely would support the, the first option that was presented. If you can go back a couple of slides back. That one right there, just because I think it, it balances, again, the needs of, of our residents at the same time, the needs of our, our businesses as well. So that completes my comments and, and questions. Let's start off with Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, again, staff, thank you for the report. There was mention of the possibility if, if, if the resident, oh, if an assistance program comes forth. It's a Kingdom Causes Bellflower might be utilized. I just wanted to, again, disclose that I'm a volunteer, a member of the board directors. So, and again, volunteer is the key word. Growth of the heart, that's what I say. So with that, Jim and Travis, again, just definitions under this, this added program money business, does that include potentially nonprofits?
Councilmember Hamada, the CDBG COVID funds, if they were used for businesses, would not be eligible to be used for nonprofit organizations. The CARES Act funds, there is the potential for that to be used for nonprofit businesses. But they would have, there might be some additional forms that they would need to fill out, and there would have to be some sort of proof of need shown. And we might as, we, we might want to condition funds like that to make sure that the, the funds are, especially if this is a regional nonprofit or something of those lines, that the funds are, are for Bellflower residents and would be totally spent in the city of Bellflower for the benefit of the Bellflower residents.
All right, thank you. Yeah, when I was looking at the numbers and, and my first draft of the, the number for the residential system program was about four hundred K, so that's in the ballpark there, so. That, that's a, I think that was a good number. So with that, Jim and Travis, this might be the crazy question. The estimated need out there, I know four hundred K seems like, definitely a lot of money in my turn, but the need out there is, is just overwhelming, I'm going to have to say. Is there any numbers that we're working off of? Or we're just kind of going along as, and then, you know, what, I don't, again, that, I mean, that portion of the program's right in, 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 in my mind. So.
Uh, Councilmember, Member Hamada, are you, are you asking, do we have any idea of what the actual demand is at this point?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the crazy question.
Okay, no, we don't. As council, as Mayor Garza mentioned earlier, and anecdotally, we hear a lot, we, we get requests for since, assist, rental assistance as well as landlord-tenant dispute assistance because of potential evictions. And we, we send our potential dispute folks to the Fair Housing Foundation to get guidance and help from that organization, which is paid through our federal grant money as well that we receive. And then our, our rental assistance, we, we send them out to wherever we have the ability to send them out to where the, whatever organizations are providing that type of informa, or that type of assistance. So we try to put that on our website, and we try to keep that handy for when we do get requests for that type of assistance, since we haven't had a program in place.
Yeah. All right, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Santenaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dalaga, a couple of questions here. In the Small Business Assistance Program that was almost completed, where we granted close to three hundred thousand dollars, do you know if there's any, of any number of applicants that are qualified but didn't make it because either they were late in submitting the applications or it's, it exceeded a three hundred thousand dollar fund that we allocated?
There were some people that called in after the application period was over that they didn't hear about it in time, so this would benefit them. There are a few businesses still on the list that could potentially get funded if any of the existing businesses fail to complete the program. There's maybe three or four approvals left, but they have, still have to complete signing documents and, and finalizing a couple of documents and getting, getting them to us before we can release the checks to them. So there, there is a demand out there, and we, we get, similar to the, to the residential assistance questions, we get business assistance questions almost on a daily basis.
Okay. Since one of the, I, I think one of the conditions that you enumerated is that anyone who qualified under the Small Business Assistance Grant will not be eligible under this grant. I'd like to propose that if we're going to grant something for businesses, we cap it at ten thousand dollars, similar to the Small Business Assistance Program, because they didn't get any, I mean, they will not qualify anymore to this new funding, so we should not be grant, granting the new businesses with more money than previously granted.
Noted, sir. We, I should have brought that up, that this would be the same maximum grant amount as the previous program.
Okay, good. Thank you. Minor thing, you listed a few items here, about seven items that qualify for reimbursement, like laptops and temperature, temperature checker at city hall. I was looking at the plexiglass, I mean, this is minor. Can, can, can this be reimbursed as a grant? The plexiglass at the city council?
I, I think it might be included in there somewhere, or it was, it was included in the FEMA cost.
Okay.
And so FEMA paid for that, and this grant would be paying the city's twenty-five percent FEMA match. So it's kind of covered by both.
Okay. I know that this, that glass is expensive.
Yes.
Okay, very good. That, Koops, make questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santenaz. Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. And I also agreed with your, it was slide number ten, Mr. Garza, and then Ray Hamada was kind of liking it too. That's what the residential was approximately the four hundred thousand and the five changes for the business. Definitely for that. I got a question for Jim, and Mr. Santenaz drove this out to me. On the, the ten K limit for the businesses is the same as last time? I know we kind of upped it to bigger businesses with up to fifty employees, is that correct?
That, that's a proposal, that's, that's a proposal I'm making tonight to help include additional businesses.
In the recommendations, just take it to the next level of business. Because there's a lot of businesses that may not have been able to qualify, because I think we had a limit of ten employees before?
Big, twenty.
Twenty before?
Twenty-five, twenty-five, I'm sorry.
So it gets to be a bigger business, so I'm wondering, I'm just kind of doing a gut check here if the, the ten thousand is, is, needs to be raised or not. And I'm just going to bring it for conversation for my colleagues to discuss as a team here tonight. I'm not, nothing a mountain that I'm going to die on. And Mr. Hamada had a good, the same question in his head as in mine is regarding what's going to be the overall? to be the overall ask for residential, is residential help. As you know, I have this number in my head, there's just over 10,000 rentals in town. If 25% of those rentals needed help, that's 2,500 individual units or renters. When you look at the 2,500, I kind of did some math here, okay, 2,500, yeah, the thousand, that's 250,000. So 2,000, 500, that we don't have enough money. That just gives you an idea how this could work. But I guess that's something we gotta discuss if it's tonight or get this ball rolling, we can bring that back. I don't know how we divvy up, divvy up the money. I know you had an example of a thousand dollars each month up to three months, but that was the, the government or the CDBG guidelines. I think that's what that was.
Correct. That's the maximum that we can, that we can do.
Also, the administration along, you know, either for the CARES Act or the CGB, I think we ought to do it in-house. We do in-house administration for, back when we had redevelopment, we did administration for other CDBG block grants. We've all done that in-house. We, we are a lot slower here in, in COVID times, City Hall. There's, there's people at their desks that, you know, I'm not saying they're not doing the job, but I think maybe there's some room for other employees to add work to it. And I don't know how many people are at home, you know, on a computer too. I have no idea. That's what city manager does. But I think we ought to keep the administration costs in-house and control it that way. But I'm quite, I agree with this slide, divided up for businesses for the CARES Act and the CGB for residential. But my concern is not enough for the residential, but it just seems the easy way, stay within the guidelines for this. We don't know what the need is going to be until we out, you know, get it out there. But that's kind of my comments, which way I'd like to see this go. That's all I have on here.
Councilmember Dutton and, and other council members, we, we just got notice today also of a program that's coming out through the County Development Authority, LA County Development Authority, that is a, a program for renters, for rental assistance. We happen to be a target city for those funds. So, and those funds though, a little bit different in that they will be targeted to the very low income category of residents. So that would be 50% AMI or below. And if you're at 50% of the median income, a household can receive up to $7,500. If you're at 30% of the median income, which is very low, you can receive up to $10,000 in assistance. So we will also, you know, if the council directs us to do a residential program with the CB funds, we will, we'll, we'll do that in concurrence with this and that will, we, we will look out for the duplication of benefits. And we can actually target, help target the individuals between the 50% and the 80%, because that's, that would be missing from the program that the County Development Authority is putting, has put together and has put out.
Hey, Mayor, I forgot that. Make one comment. Yeah, done. Okay, thank you. Also, by us being able to help with the business assistance, that could be the, a business that can keep its employees working and not laying them off where they don't have enough money to pay their rent. I mean, for every business that's working, we want to keep this economy kind of going. It's what, how the system works. And when you, when you look at it, yeah, we're giving more money to the businesses, but that's also in hope, not just for the businesses to stay open, it's to keep those employees so they can feed their own families and, and a roof over their head. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Those are great points. And I, I'd like to come back to some of them. Let me give the opportunity, Mr. Coops, to also make his comments as well. Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in agreement with your allocation on slide 10. I think that's the fairest. And we need to motivate our businesses to be able to, I'm always concerned that we have these wonderful programs and how do we get it out there that this is available? So it's utilized. And I'd like to talk a little bit about, I agreed with what you said, Sonny, about the $10,000. If you ran it the first time and at the second time it went up to 20,000, you say, well, shoot, I should have waited. But we need to consider that these businesses that we're going to be including possibly up to 50 employees, 10,000 might not wet the bottom of their checkbook very much, whereas 20,000 might. But let, we, let's talk about that because I understand what you're saying. You shouldn't be penalized for being the first ones in and not participating the second time. But I agree with everything that's been said. It's a great program. We need to figure out a way to utilize it the best we can so that people are well aware of what's out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Proton Coops. Mr. Dutton, I think the points you made before about the number of employees, if we want to raise that or not, and also the, the amount of rental, do we want to continue to do 1,000 or different? I, I think those are great points. Do you, would, do you want to tackle those first? Or do you want to take public comment first and then come back? What would you like?
Maybe we can ask, you know, staff, does it need to be that, does the formula need to be figured out tonight? Does, because this, obviously, we're not going to be able to do any funding down the road till September, I think is what I was told. You know, I think we have time, I don't know.
It would help if we could come up with the formula tonight because we need to, in order to implement the CDBG.
Perfect.
Maybe we'll have an idea of, maybe the county has a record of what they're seeing, you know, maybe someone has some data of, of what the, you know, how many people are struggling paying rent.
Yeah, and I'd like to mesh it better with the, the county money that's coming down as well on the long income housing. So I think I would like that additional two weeks to look at the, look at the debt on that.
Not, not a problem. So if you're okay, are you okay, gentlemen, with what he's proposing of, you know, continuing to refine this at, at the next time?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, because I, I'm cognizant about the proposal to increase the, the funding, the grant to businesses. But I want to see, get a survey in terms of how many businesses need the, need the assistance. Because I'm of the opinion that the more we can assist, the better. So if it's 10,000, 20,000, I'm, I'm open to the idea, but depending on how many eligible applicants will be out there.
Great. Mr. Hamada, do you have?
Oh, no, I'm good. This is, this is a work in progress.
Yeah. While, while I have my thought from Sonny, that was a good idea, you know, it, you know, and I get the 10,000 the first time versus this time. That was 20 employees. Maybe we do 10,000, keep it the same for the, the 20 employees and then maybe a little more money for more employees. I don't know. It's something to discuss.
Sliding scale. Those are all good points. And we're kind of setting the path right on this. So we'll figure it out. But I, I think we're all at least on the same page in terms of where we're going with this. I think it's just more of a wallpaper that we have to figure out on this. So if there's no further comments or questions at this point in time, gentlemen, then I'd like to ask our deputy city clerk to see if there's any members of the public that wish to make comments regarding item 13A this evening.
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you for that, Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so, gentlemen, any final questions, comments, thoughts? What's your pleasure?
My question is, do they have enough information to come back to us?
Well, I think I'd like to get a little more clarification on the big item issues that you've, do you agree with the recommendation of Mr. Delonga on the first iteration on the division between business and residential? And then if you agree with that, then do you agree with the allocations with which Mr. Delonga has set forth, or do you want to increase those? I think that we can hold off on some of the, the more picky and stuff, but I'd like to make the decisions so we can build on that when we start bringing back data for the council at the next meeting on that. So I'd like to get as far as we could tonight and how far you're willing to go and then just leave the rest for the next meeting.
So just to clarify, so your question is, are we in agreement with slide 10?
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, we might as well start with slide 10 as the basis and see if we want to adjust that further tonight and then we'll bring back some of the, the more detailed stuff at the next meeting. I just want to get as much consensus as we can so we don't start from scratch.
Absolutely. That's a good question. So, gentlemen, are we in agreement on slide 10? Yes?
What about doing administrative in-house?
So he, Councilmember Dutton had proposed of us doing it in-house.
Question to staff, can, can staff do it?
So in talking to Mr. Delonga, I believe that we have the ability to do it in-house. And if we learn down the road, we don't have the ability, we can always adjust in flight and, and do this. And I think we could do that. So I think what I'd ask for now is the discretion to go forward with it, doing it in-house. And if we can't, we notify the council on how far we'd have to go going outside.
Okay. Mr. Dutton, are you okay with that?
Yep, yep, yeah. Oh, yeah. And maybe I'll put slide 10 up there for.
Just, yeah. If you don't mind, Mr. Delonga putting up slide 10, just to ensure that we're all on the same page, including the public, in terms of what we're, what's being considered. So there it is, slide 10. Mr. Stewart, do you need any more guidance at this point in time?
I'm good with Mr. Delonga. Jim, are you good?
The, the one thing I, I want to, if we are good with the DOF CARES Act funds with, for business assistance grant program, that has a much stricter deadline that we have to meet. We have to submit a plan to use those funds by September 1st. And so if, if council is comfortable with the numbers that are there, approval of that would be fantastic for us to put together the plan and get it sent out to the Department of Finance to make sure we, they're okay with it.
So if I understand correctly, then, then I think the items with regards to the businesses, the business assistance will need to be resolved today for us, for staff to be able to have enough time to, these funds to be used by September 1st, correct?
I think, I think we can, if we can go with these budget amounts, I think we can fine tune the program after the fact. But if the, the budget amounts that are shown here on slide 10 for the CARES Act funds are acceptable, then we, I believe we can put a plan together that would be suitable for the Department of Finance.
Well, the one big policy call I heard tonight that was brought forward, not decided upon, was to increase the amount for businesses with slightly larger payrolls. And do you think we have the ability to, to adapt that? If, if the council, for instance, decides at a future meeting that they want to increase the number for persons with 75 employees as opposed to 50 and make it a little bit less for, for those with 50, are, are we good with that?
I believe so. Those are good talking points that were brought up about, you know, adjusting that. So I think we're good with that as long as we have the major budget expenses designated for this. I guess the only other thing, Mr. Stewart, is the, the council's desire to make nonprofits eligible for these funds.
That's a policy call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Santanis, I, I know you had.
Mr. Delonga, once we submit the plan to DOF, is that the final for the budget already?
That's a good question. This is all new and as we are flying by the seat of our pants here, so I think is the DOF. And so we could probably submit an amendment. I can look into that after the meeting tonight and see if that's something that, that can be done. Having a vague plan or maybe not so specific might, might be more flexible for us than, than getting into the weeds on, on a, a plan that we submit.
Okay. So if, if that's the case, I'd like to ask Mr. Stewart if you can do one more pass in terms of city eligible expenses to make sure that we can get reimbursed for all of this against DOF funding?
Right. Jim, let's just go forward with the direction you have tonight and then we'll bring an item back for discussion at the next meeting on the final points. That as far, as far along as you get in your plan, we'll bring it back for council fine tuning.
Sounds good.
Hey, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I believe the, we've all discussed, all of us are okay with the allotments on slide 10.
Okay.
I think that's, that's what you're asking, if we were good with those, all those numbers. And I believe we are.
Okay.
The direction we have tonight is we're gonna clarify the algebioldies. We're gonna clarify whether or not the council wants a sliding scale with regard to the number of businesses based on the number of employees we have. And then we have to come back and make a pass at whether or not we want to include the nonprofits as far as eligible businesses. And we can take that up next meeting.
Mr. Hamada, are you okay?
Yes, again, I, I just, again, threw that out there because in my mind, it's a business too. So that's why, that's why I asked, if it's, if it's under the definition. I got some clarification. I know it, it's, in some, most cases, it's not the high priority. So and, and hopefully, there's more money down the road. And I, I know the first round, I, I'd ask the same question. And it says, it may be possibly the next time. And so right now, I'm not aware of any of our local nonprofits that are downed out. So, and I know they're, you know, busting at the, again, at the, in opportunities for grants out there. So I haven't heard anything that, that's, that's put them in like dire straits. So, so right now, I think, I'm good. And I, I think we're all patient and we're trying to, to work where we can fit in. And so, so.
Well, we have a couple of weeks.
Yeah. And then, yeah, that's right. Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mr. Coops?
We've had this nonprofit discussion every time we have this money come forward. Personally, I believe, you know, every church is a nonprofit. And I really don't think that this was meant to be able to support a church. I just.
What about service clubs?
Well, there, where do you start? With the corner, the rotary? You know, I just, it just doesn't send me in the right direction as to what our thoughts would be. Back to what we were talking about, one of the things that I keep looking at is when I see that empty parking lot at Sizzler and Golden Corral, and I know they didn't qualify. They got a lot of employees that are longer, you know, they're on the payroll, I'm sure, in some shape. But now they'll be able to come forward and possibly a part of what we're doing tonight. And $10,000 isn't going to do much for them, but 20 or 25 might. But those are the kind of businesses that I think that we weren't able to include the last time. And they stood on the sidelines. And these are some heavy hitters for our city that we've worked hard to bring and maintain. And especially Golden Corral, I, you know, what can he do there? A patio dining with five people, it's just not working. Right. So we just need to try to, and preschools, you know. In my situation, I know there are many preschools in this town that utilize 15, 20 people on staff. And they're hurting because the parents aren't bringing their kids there because they aren't employed to be able to pay the bill. So there are some opportunities there as well. When I talked to Jim earlier, well, I'll give you a quick example. I had house guests this weekend and the lady that stayed with us broke her nail and she didn't know what to do about it. So there's a place that's got an awning up over here on Alondra, five hour wait to get your nail fixed. So she got some superglue at Walgreens and was okay. But, but so, back to what we were talking about before, we need to have a compassionate heart for these businesses to try to get them going and keep them in business. And I think that time is of the essence. And if we can give Jim what he needs to be able to submit this application with these numbers in it, we're doing the right thing.
Great. Thank you for that, Mr. Coops. Okay, so I think we're good in agreement, correct, gentlemen? Mr. Stewart, you got, Mr. Delonga?
Yes.
Everyone, okay? Okay, great. So with that, I do in seeing him. Yes, please.
Motion for direction?
I, I think the, the city manager.
We just, we just make a motion, we provide direction to the city manager.
I think we did.
If you want to make your motion more comprehensive, you've adopted, adopted, you make a motion to adopt the guidelines largely presented by Mr. Delonga on the staff report and that you've asked for some fine tuning on several items to be brought back at the next meeting.
I got it. Okay, I think I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, provide direction with the use of slide 10 in the PowerPoint from Jim Delonga, along with the discussion that we had here regarding the, to see if there's any data on how many residential people are having a hard time paying rent that may inundate us to ask for a, a help. So we have an idea of what to give them. And so everybody gets a little bit. Also, look into the possibility of maybe a two-tiered business help regarding how big the businesses, it could be based on gross or it could be based on employees. We all know that more employees, the bigger the gross. That, am I forgetting anything, guys? And to go with our in-house administrative oversight to run the program.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
For the CARES Act funds.
Because I think that was all, all those four items.
CGB funds, both of them.
Can you repeat that again, Mr.?
Yeah, good to see it. Easy for you to say.
For the record.
The city clerk didn't get it.
We have a city clerk.
I wanna make sure that it's clear.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton, a second by Mayor Protem Coops.
What was the motion?
Without any further discussion, a roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye, thank you so much, sorry. Uh, item thirteen B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration, impossible action to consider an appeal by the Director of Public Works determination, knowing a public works check this waiver application from Panos Demetropolis for required right-of-way improvements at one four seven six two Bellflower Boulevard. And Mr. Iniguez is here to make staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The Bellflower Municipal Code requires right-of-way improvements when the value of a building permit exceeds twenty-six thousand dollars. The building permit valuation for the applicant's project at one four seven six two Bellflower Boulevard is thirty-five thousand dollars. Because of this valuation, the Public Works Department evaluated the project site and identified two driveway aprons as being substandard. The cost to replace the two aprons is estimated at five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. On February twenty-six, twenty-twenty, the applicant did submit a waiver requesting that the replacement of the two aprons be waived because the work would also require the replacement of two existing parkway drains and the relocation of an electrical box for adjacent traffic signals, which would be too costly for the applicant. After review of the waiver application and a second onsite inspection, public works staff determined that the aprons could be replaced without impacting the existing parkway drains or the electrical, electrical service to the traffic signals. Subsequently, the waiver request was denied by the Director of Public Works. The Bellflower Municipal Code allows the applicant to appeal the determination of the Director of Public Works to the City Council. The applicant has submitted an appeal, which was received by the City Clerk's office on July second, twenty-twenty. The applicant is asking the city to waive the required improvements due to the recent financial hardship his restaurant has endured from COVID-nineteen. Staff recommends that the City Council consider an appeal of the Director of Public Works's determination, deny on the waiver request for one four seven six two Bellflower Boulevard, and determine whether to reverse, affirm, or modify the decision of the Director of Public Works or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. And I believe the applicant, Mr., pardon me, Panos Demetropolis, is on the Zoom meeting. So with that, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Iniguez, for that report. Uh, before we move on to the applicant, um, let's start off with questions for you, uh, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bernie, um, the requirement of the apron changeouts, now obviously that's prompted by the valuation of the project that's happening at the site now. Uh, in in my understanding, does that mean the new aprons will be the easy access?
Correct.
The rounded, the rounded apron, so to speak.
For instance, in purpose, it would be ADA compliant.
ADA compliant.
It would meet all the, the slopes and cross slopes required by ADA, correct?
And, uh, when it comes to this improvement, the sidewalk that crosses the apron, uh, that'll be all at the same level.
Correct, it it would not exceed the two percent for the cross slope.
Yeah. Okay, um, I did go out to the site, just check it out, it's in District One. And, um, I noticed that some old drains, cross drains, the ones that cross the driveways, the aprons on the property, were filled with concrete. And those drains are are obsolete and there were new drains that were placed. I think they had square plates on it, so is that confirmed? Because I, because it's on both, it's on both aprons.
Correct, on both sides.
All right, okay, I just, I just happened to notice that, it looked a little odd there. Okay. I think with the, what I saw out there was a lot of scraping of of the wings. People driving onto it, scraping it, and there's a lot of notches in 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 the wings. And that's also going, leaving out too. And, um, I think if someone makes a left on Bellflower northbound and tries to get into the, you know, it's a quick, you gotta enter. And I I know that the driveway is not as wide as probably it should, you know, should be because if someone's pulling out, you're not gonna be able to get in in a lot of cases. So, uh, more so, again, it's just to improve the grade for for the ADA standards.
Correct, they will bring it up to standard, correct?
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Okay, thank you, Bernie, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Santinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one quick question, Mr. Iniguez. Um, I I think the crux of the issue here is the, uh, potential impact on the driveway drains and electrical box. And then subsequently, it was determined that there was no impact on those two. So the only requirement of the the owner is to replace the driveway apron, right?
That that is correct, based on.
Has that been communicated with the applicant?
Uh, I believe it has been by the staff at Public Works, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask a question to the applicant, Leo.
Not a problem, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely, uh, Councilmember Dutton?
This exact same scenario happened to me. I had a fifty thousand dollar valuation and had to replace a fifteen thousand dollar driveway apron for handicap. The apron was less than ten years old. And I see why it doesn't, and if things scrape on it, I don't know if it's only because of the the wings, but when I got my apron done, less things scraped on it going straight up because of the sidewalk's actually lower, how it comes, other than that. But I mean, it's something we've been doing, and this was done, and I'm gonna say it'd be fifteen years ago that I had to do it. We've been doing it time again, time again through the city. I think, uh, this waiver would set a precedent that we've got to continue to do it. And that's always been a rule, because I know fifteen years ago, at least, maybe fourteen years ago, I had I had to go through this and got educated the hard way by my wallet. Um, but I think we need to continue the program for the valuation, you know. Yes, it would be easier to swallow if it was a hundred thou- hundred thousand dollars worth of work getting done. It was on the low side, I thought it was on the low side in my deal too, but I had a extra, I had double wide, that's why my approach was so expensive. But I think we need to continue with getting some of these things replaced with, make them ADA compliant.
Great, thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton, Mayor Protem Coops.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I was interested in what Sunny said about whether or not the the applicant knew that the things that he was concerned for, the two drains and the electrical box were no longer part of the project and that he would not have to have that expense, additional expense on top of the replacement of the apron. But I feel as though, I I also have replaced and never asked for a waiver, knowing that if you did an improvement on your property, that you were gonna be, this would be part of what you had to plan on spending. And I think this is purely economics is what we're gonna be talking about. So, but we'll have an interview of the applicant who's online, but that's all I have at this time.
Great, thank you so much for that, Mayor Protem Coops. Uh, all my comments, I mean, questions have been addressed by my colleagues. So, uh, with that, Mr. Iniguez, did you have something further before we opened up?
No, not at this time.
Great, okay, so, um, before we, so I'm gonna open it up for public comments, but before we open it up to the general public, I'd like to ask to see if there's any, any representative, including the applicant, that is wishing to make comments this evening. And if so, can you let us know, Madam Deputy City Clerk, because I know we have to administer a swearing and an oath for this?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I know that we have Bill Clark, Bill Clark and Panos Demetropolis on the line. I'm not sure if they're wishing to present public comment or not.
Yes, we are.
So yes, okay, so why don't we do a swearing for both of them? Uh, and so if, Madam City Clerk, I'll let you guide us on this process.
Can you hear us?
Yes, if you could please raise your right hands, I'm going to administer the oath. Okay, do you solemnly state under penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give in the matter pending before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for that, Madam, uh, City Clerk. Uh, so with that, um, can you go ahead, please identify yourself and go ahead and 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 share your information, Mr. Applicant?
Yeah, good evening, this is Bill Clark, and I am the contractor out on the job. Mr. Demetropolis is very, very broken English, it should be really hard to understand what he would have to say. What I have to say is when we went in to pull permits for this project, um, we were told by the, the city planner there that we should try to get the drive aprons waived because they've been doing that. And so I I'm, that's why we went through this whole grill, is to try and get these waived because this place has been there for thirty-plus years and we haven't had any problems with the approaches the way they are right now. And to do a little, um, cleanup of the restaurant inside and have to go outside and do all this extra work was just a real hardship on, uh, Mr. Demetropolis. And it's just, that's why we're doing this, is because it's such a hardship on him. I gotta understand one thing, he has a, there's no drive-through here, it's a walk-in business. So he's just scraping to stay alive right now. And so that's why I'm here, is to try and help him to see if we can get this one thing waived this one time and and, uh, help him out. I mean, you know, he's been, he's been a a great business in your city for over thirty, like I said, thirty-plus years. Tam's Restaurant, I'm sure you know about it. And it's, it's just a real struggle for him right now, so that's why we're doing this.
Thank you for that, Mr. Clark. Did I complete your comments at this point in time?
Yes, if not.
Thank you so much for that. Uh, why don't we go, why don't we start off with Councilmember Santinas for questions for you?
Mr. Demetropolis, um, I just wanna clarify, um, in your application for a waiver, uh, you indicated that, um, you're requesting the waiver on the driveway aprons because of the the impact on the driveway drains and the relocation of the electrical panel, electrical box. Uh, since you staff confirmed that those two are not required anymore, are you aware that, um, that determination has been made based that?
Yes, we are, we're completely aware of that.
Are you still pursuing the appeal based on that?
Exactly. That's a small part of of the approaches.
Okay, let me just let you know that, um, businesses, residential, property owners, even the city are complying with ADA requirements. So we're not even taking exception, uh, on those things because of a hardship case. So it's gonna be very difficult for us to give you the waiver because, uh, we're gonna be opening a Pandora's box once we do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, uh, Councilmember Santinas, uh, Councilmember Dutton?
What kind of construction was evaluated at the thirty-five thousand?
Is that a question for me?
Yeah, for the contractor, anybody, yeah.
Well, they added, inside the restaurant, they added two, um, restrooms in the side, on the side of the restaurant, uh, so that the public could have public restrooms there.
Gotcha, gotcha.
ADA, ADA restrooms. And, uh, you know, that was pretty much the extent of it.
Is this a business that is currently open?
Yes, it is. By a thread, but it's open.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's bad timing. Um, I'm the guy, I'm the guy that had had this exact same thing happen to me. Um, I did not complete, I did all the improvements and I did not complete that approach till three years later. I was so mad, and, uh, I just, uh, that's the way I did it. I had to put a bond up to do it, but that's what happened.
Well, can I, can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Lynn Gurecki, who I've been dealing with, has been, uh, just a great guy to, um, talk with and give me information. He's the Director of Public Works there. He's a wonderful guy. I I I don't take anything away from the city at all. The only thing we're trying to do is either get, um, if we can get, um, a waiver, uh, for more time to get this done and, uh, possibly get the construction part of the building signed off and then get, you know, more time to do these drive approaches to give, you know, to let him build his business up a little bit more. It'd be very, very helpful because this COVID-nineteen has been a real, real tough deal for everybody involved. And, uh, you know, anything the city could do there would be great and wonderful for us.
That's kinda why I asked if the business was open.
Yeah, it is open.
Um, because it seemed, that's what, you know, um, uh, if the, you know, the business is open or whatever, and I just, I just, you know, just kept my, had my job card signed for a while until I eventually was able to cool off enough to dig up the new, dig up a young approach and put a new one in. But, but there's another question, this may be a way out. Maybe this owner ought to apply for the the COVID grant that we kinda just discussed to help his business, and you can use it for that kinda stuff. Because obviously, it's a financial thing, and we know restaurants got hit hard.
Right.
And maybe we can buy a little time in a couple of months or something and and get the, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Is it, is it possible to get like a six-month time extension?
I, I'm not the expert in that, I got the building, I don't know if we have any staff here or not, but I think three months is what we've normally done.
That's under great circumstances. This is not good circumstances, so I'm just trying to get as much time as I can for him, you know, to save up money to get it done, so.
You want me to admit, admit? Yeah, why don't you, why don't you, uh, city manager take over there?
As long as it's secure, I mean, I think that the solution with the grant probably in this particular case works perfectly well for you. And I think it eases your problem. As long as it's secure and you're not creating additional damages based on the overwork or anything, there's no reason you couldn't get, you know, a three-month extension. And if if Mr. Gurecki thinks it's appropriate, he could grant another three months while you're working on this. But I actually think things are gonna move pretty quickly on this grant, and you can get it wrapped up very quickly and and get this project done. So I think that's what I would do on this. I would just speak with, uh, I, I think the work needs to be done, I think the city needs to enforce it. But I think there's an opportunity here to work with you and get this done so it's a much less painful issue.
Mr. Stewart, Mr. Gurecki is on the line and available to speak now, he's just unmuted himself.
Hi, can you guys hear me this evening?
Yes, Mr. Gurecki, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Um, to, to, just to expand on what Jeff said a little bit, I'll, I'll, tomorrow, I'll sit with the planning and building department and figure out what we can do in terms of, uh, getting the work that's been completed so far signed off on and then issuing an extension for the driveway aprons, uh, as as Jeff had mentioned. That's, that's fairly, fairly simple for us to do, it's just administrative stuff. And, uh, certainly, anything we can do to try to, uh, you know, work this along with the, uh, with the applicant and, uh, and the business, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly do what we can.
That, that's great news, Lynn, I really appreciate that.
Mr. Dutton?
Yeah, uh, Mr., I'm sorry, I didn't write your name down, Mr. Clark, thanks. Um, how, what's the percentage of the inside work being done? Is it like seventy-five percent complete, hundred percent complete?
One hundred percent done inside.
What was added in here?
One hundred percent done inside.
Okay, then you're ready to rock and roll, we need Lynn there tomorrow.
Yeah, it's ready, it's ready to be. Yeah, it's ready, it's ready to be signed off. But I can't get it because the city tells me until this work is completed, they won't sign off.
We'll work that out. That's, that's not hard. Lynn can work that through tomorrow with the building official.
That, that'd be wonderful.
Mr. Dutton? Great, okay, thank you so much for that. And for staff, Mr. Coops?
No, I think we've got a solution. It sounds to me like the applicant's happy with what we can offer, and he should try to connect with our other departments to get some support.
Great, great. Thank you for that, Mr. Tim. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say I'm a regular patron of Pam's, so I definitely know it well. And, but when it comes to ADA requirements and, you know, challenges that are out there, it's something we need to take care of, so. And it's, okay, and, and now with the update of, of, you know, the possible grant, and, and again, you know, time extensions, again, I think I'm all for that. And hopefully that can be worked out, and because Belfour is a friendly, business-friendly city, so let's keep at it. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. And I know you already asked, Mr. Santanez, are you okay with, great, okay. All right, well, any last comments or questions for Mr. Clark? All right, so hearing none, then, thank you, Mr. Stewart.
There's no action required on this item.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we're gonna go forward with the plan we discussed, the council needs to take no formal action.
Okay, great, thank you for that. And I know that we're still in public comment period, so hearing nothing more from the applicant. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any comments from the members of the public regarding item thirteen B?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so, so we never, you're gonna need a formal action on this, Mr. Stewart?
No, we have direction from the council, so to restate the direction from the council is there's no formal action to take tonight, but the Assistant City Manager and I have an obligation to meet with Mr. Clark, get the work that he has completed, a hundred percent work, and then get some kind of a delay on the permit needed for the improvements that he makes after he goes through the grant program on this. And we can do that, I think, in the form of a letter, which specifies what we're doing on the issuance of the permits on this.
Not a problem. If you're okay, then we're okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just, this is a question to City Attorney, just for official records, don't we need to take action on the appeal?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if the council takes no action, then the decision of the Public Works Director remains in place, and the city council is simply given separate direction by upholding the Public Works Director, or Public Work Director's decision, sorry.
So no action?
No action.
Okay, all right.
Great, all right, so then if that completes all action regarding item thirteen B, so then thank you to everyone for their, for their work on this item. And I'm glad to, I think I can speak for everyone, I'm thankful for the, the solution that's been developed here tonight. All right, so moving on to item number fourteen, consent calendar. Are there any items that any of my colleagues wish to be pulled for separate discussion or consideration this evening? Are there any items that have conflicts or?
No conflict, I'd like to pull, I would like, I got a comment on D.
So you want me to, you wanna pull item fourteen D?
I just wanna make a, yeah, I need, I don't wanna pull it, I just, I wanna ask a question.
Okay, great, so fourteen D, we'll ask that. Any items to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor, again, I just have some comments, like, comments on fourteen C, fourteen D, and fourteen R.
Fourteen C?
Fourteen C, D, and R.
And R, okay. So so far, I know there's gonna be comments and questions, but any items pulled?
I've got a conflict on fourteen I. I've got a property on Rendelia Street that's in conflict with Lakewood and Alondra Boulevard, so I will not participate in fourteen I.
Okay, not a problem, thank you for that. Mayor Protem Coops, any other recusers, conflicts? Mr. Dutton?
Sorry, I was.
Well, it says there's no apparent conflict.
Oh, no, I have no apparent conflict.
Yeah.
Okay, great, not a problem. Great, so, so why don't we start off with item, let's start off in alphabetical order. So item fourteen C, Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Byma, again, hopefully, once we confirm it. Again, Jared, he's a local businessman, and he's a family man, raising a family that loves to go to parks here, so. And guess what? He's also a volunteer board member of Kingdom Causes, so just wanted to point that out, as usual. So that was my comment.
Great, on item fourteen C. All right, item fourteen D, I believe both you gentlemen have comments and questions about, Mr. Dutton is the one that pulled it, I mean, not pulled it, but set it aside first.
Hey, Lynn Gurecki, you still up there?
Yes, sir.
I know we got Dermatherm coming for that signal at Harvard. This is the Harvard one. Are the signals black?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Is that complete your?
Yeah, thank you.
You got it, no problem, Councilmember Dutton and Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, I wanna thank Mr. Gurecki again on this project. In looking at the plans, I do note that some of the, some of the additional work is red zoning some of Harvard. So it's, it's, it's needed because the ingress and egress has been, has been impacted by cars parking along the north side of Harvard. Sometimes it's very difficult to do the right turn because someone's pulling out, and they're right in the middle of the road, so you, you gotta stop. So I did see that, and I wanna just point that out, and thank Public Works for that.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. And then item fourteen R, Mr. Hamada?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one, again, this is a location in proximity to the YMCA, Alastair's YMCA. And again, I do wanna point out that I'm another volunteer board member. I happen now to be the chair of the board, so just wanna point that out.
That pays even more, yeah.
Yeah, that, that heart is just gonna be. But again, I know that this has come up before in these, these red zones I think are definitely needed out there for visibility and, and some of the issues because of, because of children in the area, the drop-offs and trying to get out, and, and it's, it's caused some problems out there. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Another problem, I did get to point those things out, Mr. Hamada, so, great, so I had no action, I had no items pulled. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
A second.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Santanez, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santanez?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye, thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. And moving on to item number fifteen, council reports. Mayor Protem Coops?
I have nothing to report, and we'll move right on to the next one.
Great, thank you for that, Mayor Protem Coops. Councilmember Dutton?
I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Coops and Councilmember Ray Hamada for their uncontested election coming up.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, again, thank you for the great congratulations. I know Dan is also smiling, yeah, we are. On, since the last meeting, on, let's see, July twenty-eighth, I had the pleasure to join in on the Zoom call with the lead participants. Had a very good conversation with them, and these kids are great. They're, they are our future leaders, and, because they're willing to, you know, volunteer. And again, they all stuck with the program. We had a great time talking about Bellflower. They did get a kick out of me actually seeing cows in Bellflower, so, real cows. So it was, it was a great discussion. We talked about, you know, college and, and work, so hopefully they, again, got a lot out of it. Wanted to shout out to, let's see, Pastor Troy Campbell and the Secret Place Church, which is now not in Bellflower, it's now in Pasadena. But he still comes back to Bellflower to, again, distribute food, and they put out some major tonnage. So they're talking, you know, ten tons here, fifteen tons there, so they've been doing it the last few months. So again, I just want to extend, you know, appreciations to the Secret Place Church and, and again, you know, Pastor Campbell. I am pleased to announce that on, on August first, I successfully completed the Asian Pacific American, that's the Institute for Congressional Studies National Leadership Academy. I had to spend four Saturdays on Zoom, three to four hours with only a five-minute break, somewhere in there. And we had a great discussion, and now I'm part of a, a California group now. There was, there was about ten of us that were from California, the rest were from, you know, throughout the United States. So definitely have now developed some friendships and, you know, networking and so on. So it was, it was a great time, and definitely, you know, definitely learned a lot. Another shout out to Mr. Alan Peterson. His birthday was last Saturday. He had a drive-by birthday. To Mr. Peterson, turned eighty. So just was able to drive by, say hi, and it was, it was a good time. And again, a final shout out to the YMCA, again, the, the food distribution is now in its twenty-first week. They've served over a quarter million meals, and the finale is on August, Monday, August seventeenth. And that's when the school district will then take over with, with their food program. So if you'd like to still come during the week, and next Monday, the location of the Bellflower Nutrition Center is one zero two four seven, and, and that's on Alondra Boulevard. All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Santanez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I want to congratulate Mayor Protem Coops and Councilmember Hamada for their recent reelection. They, my understanding is they won by unanimous vote. I also want to congratulate Father Toribio Gutierrez of St. Bernard's. He was installed as pastor of the parish yesterday. It was a great event officiated by Bishop Mark Todeau of the San Pedro region. It is with great sadness, I just learned, it's great sadness, I want to inform everyone that former Commissioner Jose Pacheco passed away. I'm getting more information, so I'd like to adjourn the next meeting in his, in his memory, so as I get more information. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santanez. I as well want to congratulate our Mayor Protem and Councilmember Hamada for, for being obviously widely acknowledged as leaders in our community by the fact that they weren't challenged for their seats. So that takes a lot of great, takes a lot of great leadership and a lot of wide acknowledgement for that to happen. So, gentlemen, congratulations on that, and obviously you have the faith of the community to continue your leadership, and look forward to seeing you here for the next four, four years and two years. So on the twenty-third of July, our city hosted our mentally New Hope Ad Hoc Committee meeting, which is the ad hoc that is comprised of members of the council and staff, and members of the community that live around the area of our New Hope temporary shelter. So we continue to have our dialogue. A lot of good information keeps coming out of those meetings. And in particular, in the last meeting that we held on the twenty-third, one of the comments that we got from some of the residents around the, our shelter was the, how little there was out there in terms of the, our community knowing that the shelter was actually in operation. And so with that, I think you'll, you're probably noticing that we're promoting the shelter a little bit more in our newsletter, as well as our website, and then tonight as well with my comments. So we have a lot of pride in the shelter, and I think the local community specifically there should have a lot of pride in the fact that, that they are really hosting, really transformation of lives in the community with no impact to the surrounding neighborhood. So again, I just say a heartfelt thank you to the community for the trust of us and our guidance on this, and of all the activities of service providers that, that support our homeless in our shelter. And again, it gives us an immense amount of heartfelt pride to know that we're helping our most vulnerable in that shelter. On top of that, on the twenty-eighth of July, myself and, and Mr. Stewart and, and Miss Dover, we actually got to visit our upcoming, one of our upcoming exciting projects, the Bellflower Exchange. And the beautiful thing about that project is that despite COVID, again, we, our progression in our city continues. I know that we spoke earlier about the, the NESTANBN project coming in, and obviously we've been having other projects coming online, and there's more coming online. So our, you know, our city is primarily positioned, but the exchange is gonna be like the, like Steel Craft and everything else. It's gonna be really unique, but yet very much Bellflower, and so I'm very, very excited about what's gonna be coming in there. I, the fact that it, it's gonna host some uses in there that are gonna be first timers for our city, and I think a, it, it's a bridge to the future, and the way our commerce is gonna be conducted in the future, I think it's gonna, again, it's transformative in many ways. So I, I'm really looking forward to, to this project coming online, and again, I thank Mr. Howard for, for hosting me in this, this update tour of the construction. It's really exciting, and it's almost here. On the first of August, myself and my family participated in a, in a parade, basically a caravan of southeast LA County elected officials. The intent of this parade slash caravan was to promote our census. So I ask everyone that if you have not yet submitted your census responses, you still have time. We still have a month and a half left until the end of September. So if you haven't done so, please, friendly reminder to submit those, it's very important. Every time that, that we participate in that, and our numbers are taken into account, it directly translates into additional representation for our community and our city in the form of funds for our community. So it is extremely vital, so I please implore you to participate in the census. It's available online. And if you have any questions, I'm sure you can call City Hall and get guidance on that. It's pretty easy. It takes five minutes to do online. And again, that caravan that we, that we did on the first, it started in, in Montebello. We went through, I believe, thirteen cities. We started at eight AM, and we ended in the city of Hawaiian Gardens. It was all streets, and we ended there at five-thirty PM. So it was absolutely a long day, but it was very, very worth it, so. And we did come through Bellflower briefly as well. And on the sixth of August, the LA County Division of the League of California Cities held a, an installation ceremony. We did it virtually this year. And so my congratulations to the mayor of the city of Downey, Ms. Blanca Pacheco, for her being selected as the new president of League. As I think I've, I've shared here, that is the one organization that represents every single city in LA County in Sacramento. And so we are in good hands with this Pacheco. I had the honor of representing our city as president for sixteen months. And so my last day as president was on the sixth, and it was a huge honor, again, for, to represent the city of Bellflower in this really, really special and very influential position that we had here. We defeated some really, we defeated some really high-profile legislation that, that I think we all agree would have been devastating to communities like Bellflower. So I'm really proud of that, and again, kudos to the city of Bellflower for having had a seat on this very influential body. And I'd like to adjourn our meeting this evening in the memory of Ms. Gabriela and Mr. Greg Oldano. Gabriela Oldano was a mother of Long Beach Mayor Robert Garcia. She passed away on July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, at the age of sixty-one due to coronavirus complications. Yesterday, her husband and Mayor Garcia's stepfather, Greg Oldano, also passed away due to coronavirus complications. He was fifty-eight. Gabriela immigrated to the United States in nineteen eighty-two with then-five-year-old Robert Garcia from Lima, Peru. They settled more than four thousand miles away in the San Gabriel Valley where, at the time, they could not speak English. They settled more than four thousand miles away in the San Gabriel Valley where, at the time, they could not speak English. She pursued the American dream. She worked hard, cleaning homes and working odd jobs to earn a living until she began working in the healthcare field as a medical assistant. Gabriela was always encouraged her son to study and work hard to reach his goals and was very proud that he had become mayor of the city of Long Beach. Greg Oldano was a kind and good-hearted man. He worked hard for his family and he started his own successful small business as a contractor with his brothers. Greg and Gabby were married for twenty-seven years and lived a happy life. They are survived by their sons, Robert Garcia and Jacob Oldano. Um, and they are, they were very widely loved and appreciated. Um, and frankly, this is just truly a sobering reminder that we do have a virus amongst us with no cure yet. So, um, this is really just an unfortunate example of the devastation of this disease. And so our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to our colleague, Mister Mayor Robert Garcia and the entire family. So with that, I adjourn this meeting in their memory to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, May, Monday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. It is nine thirty-three by my clock and this meeting is adjourned.